Um, it's, uh, we're gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order. Uh, the time is now ten oh seven P M. Um, uh, we're gonna do, start off with a roll call then.
Ten oh seven A M. Just for the record.
Counsel Bremen.
Present here.
Now I can, yes. And Counselor Perser is excused absent. Counselor Williams?
Yeah, I'm here.
Counselor Cry?
Here.
Counselor Miller?
Present.
Counselor Hansi?
Here.
All right, um, with that, we're gonna move into our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. So we're gonna take a moment of silence to allow all faiths and beliefs the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. With that, we're gonna do the pledge. I guess I'll, Ken wants to everybody together, so everybody has to unmute and. All right, I pledge allegiance. All right, Ken, good call. All right, with that, we've got an agenda before us. Uh, do we have any changes to that agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
David, do you please poll council? Yay.
Yes, Counselor Bremen.
Yay.
Counselor Williams?
Yeah.
Counselor Cry?
Hi.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, uh, we've got two proclamations today. So the first one is proclaiming Monday, May twenty ninth, and observance of Memorial Day. We've got, uh, Counselor Bremen, uh, reading this one for us today.
All right, whereas Memorial Day each year serves as a solemn reminder of the scourge of war and its bitter aftermath of sorrow and whereas the Congress in a joint resolution approved May eleventh nineteen fifty, provided that Memorial Day should be set aside as a day of prayer for permanent peace and whereas today and every day, let us remember the servicemen and women we have lost and let us honor them by redirecting ourselves or rededicating ourselves to strengthening our nation's promise with love, grace, and reflection. Let us honor fallen fellow Americans known and unknown who sacrificed their freedom to ensure our own end. Whereas the citizens of Fruta, the citizens of the city of Fruta desire to honor and acknowledge those who serve in uniform for their sacrifice and preservation of our American way of life. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fruta City Council hereby proclaims Monday, May twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three as observance of Memorial Day in the city in the city of Fruta and urges all citizens of this community to honor those who have served and are serving today.
All right, thanks, Matthew. I don't know if KJ's on the line. He, it looks like he is. Did you wanna say a few words, KJ?
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Bremen, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Rest of City Council, which appreciate the support. Um, would like to let everybody know that on Friday, May twenty-sixth at nine A M. We'll be placing flags at New Elmwood Cemetery, uh, on veterans' graves. So if anybody would like to participate, we'd love to have the help. There's right around four hundred uh, or so veterans that are, that are buried there, so we, uh, could always use the help. And then on Monday, uh, May twenty-ninth, Memorial Day at ten A M. At New Elmwood, we'll be doing a small ceremony, uh, to honor those that have fallen. And then, uh, again, that's at, uh, ten A M. Monday, May twenty-ninth at New Elmwood. And then I would like to take a moment and just share a couple of things, um, on May fifth, eighteen sixty-eight, General John A Logan, uh, as Commander in Chief of the Grand Army of the Republic, issued General Order Number eleven designating May thirtieth for the purpose of strewing with flowers or otherwise decorating the graves of comrades who died in defense of their country during the late rebellion, which eventually, uh, became Memorial Day. In General Order No- uh, Number eleven, one of the things that he outlined is that we are organized comrades, as our really regulations tell us, for the purpose, among other things, of preserving and strengthening those kind and fraternal feelings which have bound together the soldiers, sailors, and Marines who united to suppress the late rebellion. What can they, what can aid more to assure this result than cherishing tenderly the memory of our heroic dead who made their beat breasts a barricade between our country and its foes? Their soldier lives, lives were the rebellion of freedom to erase and chains and their deaths the tattoo of a rebellious tyranny in arms. We should guard their graves with sacred vigilance. All that the consecrated wealth and taste of the nation can add to their adornment and security is but a fitting tribute to the memory of her slain defenders. Let no wanton foot tread rudely on such hallowed grounds. Let pleasant paths invite the coming and going of reverent visitors and fond mourners. Let no vandalism evaporates or neglect, no ravages of time testify to the present or to the coming generations that we have forgotten as a people the cost of a free and undivided republic. Thank you.
All right, thank you, KJ. All right, with that, we're gonna move into our second proclamation, uh, which is proclaiming May twenty-first to twenty-seventh National Public Works Week. And Counselor Miller is gonna read that one for us. Sorry, Counselor Hansi. Hansi's gonna read that one for us.
Whereas Public Works is the thread that connects all, us all, no matter where we live in the world. Every public works professional strives to improve the quality of, of life for the community they serve, leading to healthier, happier communities. Whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public works professionals or federally mandated first responders and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of the government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures that and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and the children of the city of Fruta to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest in upstanding or understanding of the importance of public works, first responders, the public's work program uh, in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty-three marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now resolved that the city of Fruit, that the city, Fruta City Council does hereby designate the week of May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh of this year as National Public Works Week, and urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Work Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and commit, uh, ceremonies designed to pay tribute to the public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contribution they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Thank you, Aaron. And we've got, uh, Mike Bramlett. He's our heavy equipment operator, is here on behalf of the Public Works Department to accept that. Mike, did you wanna say a few words?
Sure, uh, yeah, thank you, uh. So I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing National Public Works Week, um, and for always supporting the work we do. Um, our employees are hard to maintain and improve our critical infrastructures to make Fruta a great place to live, work, and play. I personally wanted to thank you to the men and women in our Public Works Department for the work they do every day.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right, uh, with that, we're gonna move into our public participation. Uh, so this is time we set aside to listen to public comments, uh, that do not, uh, items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. And generally, the city council will not discuss the issue, will not take an official action on that. So with this, we're gonna open it up to public comment. Uh, so if there's anybody that would like to speak, now would be your opportunity. So Shannon, are, is there anybody with their hand raised? I'm not seeing anybody.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, we're gonna close public participation and move into our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been uh, met or agreed to prior to the, the time they come before council and will be all approved by one action. So we're gonna open that up to public comment. So if there's anybody online right now that would like to speak on something on the consent agenda, uh, now would be your opportunity. Shannon, are you seeing anybody that'd like to speak on this?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then we're gonna close the, uh, public comment on the consent agenda and bring it back to council. Are there any questions or comments? All right, then do we have a motion?
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Hi.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, with that, we're gonna move into, uh, we've got one public hearing today. Our quasi judicial hearing is for special event liquor permit application. Uh, request to approve an application from the, uh, Fruit of Rotary Club for the beer garden at Mike the Headless Chicken. We've got our Deputy City Clerk Deb Woods, uh, here to present on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, morning, City Council. This is the application from the Fruit of Rotary Club for a special event liquor permit for, uh, two days of Mike the Headless Chicken Festival. Friday, June second, from three to ten P M. And Saturday, June third, from ten thirty A M. To ten P M. I bear, the, the Rotary proposes to provide a beer garden for Mike the Headless Chicken at Civic Center Memorial Park. And in your council packet, there was a diagram, uh, that showed a red perimeter, uh, marked all the way around the Fruta Civic Center to include the parking lot and also about a, uh, exactly one block of Aspen Avenue. So that, um, beer garden will be um, contained by metal fencing and Civic Center building. And, um, there are four entrances listed on the diagram. Uh, Rotarians in their narrative state that they'll monitor the licensed area, including all the entrances to ensure that no alcohol enters or leaves the area. And patrons will be monitored for signs of becoming noticeably intoxicated. Fruta Chief of Police Dave Kraus reviewed the Rotary's application, and he issued his statement that there's nothing that would prohibit the issuance of the license being requested. It is staff's recommendation to the city council that the application for the special event liquor permit be approved subject to the following conditions. The entrances and exits shall be monitored closely and continuously by event staff. By the licensee, needs to be aware that they're solely responsible for control of the licensed premises and all other procedures presented by the Rotary will be followed. That includes my presentation and Rotarian Lou Mudd is with us virtually as the applicant's representative. Now I'll turn it over to Lou for any comments he'd like to add.
I think you brought it pretty well covered. We've done this, um, for a number of years now. About sixteen or seventeen since I've been part of the Rotary Club. We've never had any issues with, um, unruly participants or, or attendees. And, um, it's always a, a good fundraiser for us. We put most of the money right back into the community to, uh, worthwhile events to support kids. And as you all know, everybody who comes to our booth has a fun time. This year, we're putting, um, actually Mike's decapitation red on tap from the Copper Club, so that'll be a big seller for us. Something that, uh, exemplifies the goodness of Mike. And, uh, hope you approve our permit. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Lou. All right, with that, we're gonna open this up to public comment. If there's anybody online that would like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. Shannon, are you seeing anybody that'd like to speak?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're gonna close public comment on, on this, uh, item and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this item?
Is it really called decapitation? Red, the beer?
Yes, it's a red IPA, and that's the name that, uh, Copper Club has put on, um, for several years now, for a brew that comes up around Mike the Headless Chicken Days. And this year, we asked them if they could, uh, provide some beer for us to, to pour for the event, and they were thrilled that we asked them.
Good to know. I mean, I'll have to try beer.
If they're available, we'll be happy to.
I, I'll move, we approve the application for the special events liquor permits from the Fruit of Rotary Club to provide a beer garden during the Mike the Headless Chicken Festival. At the Civic Center Memorial Park on the dates and times requested, subject to the conditions stated by staff.
Second.
All right, we, uh, we've got a first and a second. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Cry?
Hi.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, well, thanks, Lou, for being here, and, uh, we'll see you out at the festival. All right, with that, we're gonna move into, we don't, do not have anything on our, uh, administrative agenda, so we're gonna move into our city manager's report.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just a few updates. We did, uh, Shannon and I were able to meet with Waste Management yesterday, so we were not able to, we were not able to connect with them at the conferences we had thought, but we got a, a meeting scheduled after, uh, somebody uh, with Waste Management had a surgery, so we had to wait a little bit, but they were very open to, um, the interests we have in uh, the single stream recycling and, uh, honoring our contract, uh, uh, as we do with the trials. So they're gonna bring back some options to us so that we can, uh, kinda go back and forth with them if we need to, and then we'll, we'll get them before you all, um, in the, in the future. But just wanted to let you know, we're having those discussions and uh, uh, so far looking, looking pretty good. Um, we, uh, we are planning the Mulberry, kind of a Mulberry celebration for, uh, the uh, basically the weekend of, this beginning Thursday, May twenty-fifth, uh, through Saturday, so there'll be some things going on uh, in the Mulberry Plaza space. Um, on, on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, we're gonna do a kind of an open, anybody can come, and we're gonna do some Fruta trivia and prizes at six P M. So, where we give out some Fruta, um, Fruta logoed items. And then there'll be an open mic night outside, um, that the cavalcade is leading uh, with, with music, um, open mic night. And then on Friday, May twenty-sixth, it's Fruta Fourth Friday, so it'll extend into uh, the space, um, and, uh, we will have a kind of a participative, uh, mural painting, um, uh, or at least a painting. I, I don't know if I'll call it a mur- mural. It's not on the, on any walls, but it's on, on something that we can move around and hang in different places, but it's a, uh, um, that's part of our For the Love of Fruta campaign, so we'll be leading that on that Friday, uh, during Fruta Fourth Friday in the space. And then on Saturday, um, there'll be, uh, live music in the space at six P M. That uh, the Vintage Common is, is sponsoring and, and, and leading that night. So just a few things as, uh, obviously the space is open as soon as the construction, uh, uh, pieces were down or, or blockage, uh, was down, but um, as we mentioned at the last meeting, we, we have a few things coming up. And then we also, uh, should be ready with our State of the Cities, uh, video, um, in early June. And, uh, Rocky Mountain PBS, uh, is going to host a screening of it. Now, it's only a six-minute video, so we're trying to, we're coming up with some other ideas where they may be showing some of their Fruta-related stories, um, but i- if you've seen their space, uh, they built it in a way where they can open, uh, access from the outside to kind of expand inside and outside and, and have a screening of, of videos. So uh, we've never really done a screening of it besides just putting it on, online, but, um, it should be ready, um, by then. So we're looking at June, Wednesday, June seventh um, at five thirty P M. Is what we're looking at right now for, uh, a, a small event and maybe popcorn and and, uh, people can come watch. Obviously, we'll be releasing it online where many will see it that way and through our channels. Um, and then I know the June, uh, Juneteenth event, they would like, uh, somebody from council to read, uh, this, the city's proclamation that we'll have on the June sixth meeting, uh, at their event on June seventeenth, and we've done that, uh, for a number of years. I know the mayor and mayor pro tem have conflicts on that day, so didn't, uh, or.
No, Matthew is gonna look at that, Mike.
I was gonna look, right now, I think I'm, I am not traveling on the seventeenth.
Okay, great. All right. Well, sounds like Matthew will be able to handle it, and if not, we'll let everybody know, so.
Is there a time on that yet?
Not that I've seen, but unless Joel knows.
No, I haven't seen that yet. David Combs was gonna get back with us on the, the time, and it was gonna be a split reading between Grand Junction, the Palisade, and, uh, so they're gonna have one proclamation for all three municipalities, and then each will read a section of that, is my understanding of what David wanted.
All right, yeah, I went to that last year, so happy to do it.
Great, thank you. Um, and then we're just gearing up for the next large event. Here is Mike the Headless Chicken Festival, as you, 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 uh, conducted the liquor license, uh, uh, just earlier in the meeting. Um, that'll be one of the other events until we make some other improvements at the building, where we will close the building on that Friday to the public to be able to adequately serve everything. Um, and then we will have, uh, setup occurring after the building closes on Thursday, so um, that's our plan for now. We're also, we are, as we look at the larger, um, building renovations, um, there'll be, that we have some opportunities to, to be able to avoid that, uh, be, having to do that, but we, uh, I just wanted to let you know, that's the next one coming up, but that's not something we'd be doing at many events, maybe two to three a year, uh, with the current setup that we have. And that's everything. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Mike. Uh, we're gonna move into our council reports and actions. So our first item is we've got, get rescheduling or scheduling two special city council meetings. So I don't know if everybody had a chance. Um, Mike, did you wanna go over what we, what we're looking at for those and?
Yes, um, so we have, one of them, we had talked about, uh, and I sent an email about the other, but I just wanted to make sure it works for everybody, and then, uh, it'd be good if you guys could do a motion, uh, to schedule these, and then we will get them on the, the official calendar and set the agendas. Um, but we need, uh, as part of, um, and this, the special meeting for next week would be prior to our six thirty workshop, so we need to have one at six P M. And it would be an executive session related to, uh, purchase of property, so, um, there are uh, there are some steps that we have to, uh, discuss, um, before the end of the month. So we, if, if, if it doesn't, if for some reason this no longer works for everybody, we have to find a day and time before the end of the month, uh, to do that, but it shouldn't take long.
All right, so it, it might, before you move on, so is everybody good with that?
Time did you say?
Six P M. Oh, so a half hour before our workshop.
Good for me.
Okay. And then.
Everybody's good.
And then the other one, I believe we discussed at maybe our last workshop, but having a dis- uh, a, a city council workshop at six P M. Prior to our regular scheduled meeting at seven P M. On June sixth, and that would be a workshop for, um, a, a refresher on, on the training we did after the election, but also just covering a couple pieces and any updates to areas that, that have come about since we did that training. And that would be just six to seven, and we would, we would, we, trying to, um, we get what we were planning for that one, because that's gonna be a, a longer night for you. Um, it was, we would have dinner, uh, available during the workshop during that discussion.
All right, everybody's thumbs up. Everybody good with that?
I don't think I'll be at that meeting.
Okay, and you're not recording again, correct, Ken?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And so we'll just have to double check with Janine, but everybody else looks like it's good.
Hey, I think she was good on that day, too.
All right. All right, so we just gotta make, and so Mike and, and just, Mike and I chatted a little bit this week, 'cause I forgot to put this one on my calendar when we were talking about it. So we talked about sending out a calendar invite for especially when we have these special meetings that are changed times and that. So I think, Mike, you're gonna work on that, too, to send out a calendar invite, uh, so we don't miss some of these things that are changing when we have, uh, special meetings, so, um, I appreciate that, Mike, uh, with that. All right, does anybody, anybody wanna raise their hand? Is any, I don't have any council reports. Does anybody else have anything to report? James does, and Ken does. All right, James, and so does Amy. All right.
All right, um, just real quick, we knew it was gonna happen, but the Enoch Lake thing's already starting to get us attacked. Um, not that it would be something that somebody has to spend a lot of time on, but could we have someone maybe put together maybe some bullet points for us? You know, I know we've all had conversations quite a bit about it, and we, we all came to pretty much consensus thought that it made sense, but I think that if we had a little information in front of us, especially the numbers of what that thing's costing us, and and the fact that it's not really useful because of the fact that we don't own the property around it, and just some of those um, ticket items that, in those conversations that kinda convinced us as a group. Um, if we could have those, because it's starting to hit social media pretty hard, but it's also, I'm start, I don't, you guys probably did too, but I've got a couple emails. And I'd like to answer, but I'd like us all to be on a united front. And it's, I hate to rush it, but it's gonna come at us all pretty quick here, so if we could get something on, you know, and I don't know what anybody else feels about it, but I figured that we all would probably like to have some talking points so that we're not, um, saying the wrong thing, 'cause it, we knew it was gonna be a, a touchy subject, and it's already starting to roll out, and I think um, again, the information that we talked about was very convincing, and I don't think it will take a lot to kinda change the tide, but I think we gotta do a concerted effort, so that, that's my big concern for this week.
Good call, James.
Yeah.
I think James, also, there's an article in the Sentinel, too, this week on it.
Yeah, so we, we'll, if, if everybody, I, I imagine everybody's in agreement with that, but we'll, we'll send out the summaries and, and talking points, and we also have some things on the website, so we'll send you some talking points and what you can refer to the website about as well, and old city link articles and things like that.
Thanks, Mike. Yep, thanks, James. All right, Ken?
Uh, it, it just piggyback on what James was talking about, um, tons of social media, but it all seems to be the same six or so points, a- and I think that those are the same things that we've dealt with over decades, that we've council has finally gotten past all those, 'cause we understand it, but, um, and, and maybe maybe something exists, but maybe prepping something like James talked about with, here's the, the things that people are saying, and here's the, here's the real story behind that. Help, help the public understand those common things that everybody talks about. And I wrote a list at dinner last night, so I, I may send that over to you, Mike, just in, in case there's some points on there that, that we wanna cover, but yeah, same thing.
Great, please do. Thanks, Ken.
Well, and two guys, if we could have maybe someone specific that we designate, and I don't care who that is, go on to particularly the thread in the Fruta Community Group and answer. Just give some sort of a thing, you know what I mean, after, that kind of correlates with that. Um, just be, so, 'cause it's starting to catch a mind of its own, and, and it's growing pretty quick, and I think that if someone that was knowledgeable, that was gonna put this together, got on there and just kind of addressed a couple of those things, I think it would calm it down a little bit in the meantime.
James, I would recommend that we just throw a link on there to go back to the city website with all of the information, because otherwise you'll get into listing, list of comments off from yours, and people expect a quick answer. And so I think if we direct them back to, here's the story on the website, and, and Mike, I guess we'll have to look at that and see what all information is out there, and if Ken's got a list of questions that, you know, kinda we need to address. Um, it might be, uh, you know, but that way we're, we're not continually answering questions, we're just driving it back to.
Put some sort of a, some sort of a qualifier, though, other than just, hey, this is the link, go check it out, but go. Put some sort of a, some sort of a qualifier though, other than just, hey, this is the link. Go check it out. But go. Hey, guys, these are concerned, these on, these are all valid points. Believe me, we've talked about it deeply, so on and so forth or whatever, but just maybe a little blurb with that and then shows the link. Maybe from somebody like Joel or Mike or somebody that's, that's, you know, that, that's got that face in the community.
Okay.
Do we not need to worry about some of these things that we're talking about in detail or it's still an executive session? We might need to split things up between a, here's some facts, just to clarify the article and then whatever we do determine in future executive sessions, then we can divulge, may or may not divulge more information subsequent, excuse me, subsequent to that.
Yeah, I think you're right, Aaron. There's, right now, we've received an offer. You guys have heard the offer. And in an executive session, the offer is public record, but any decisions are, would still be to come in open meetings where there be, you know, a posted notice and all that. So.
And I think, Mike, that's a good point there too, that, that can come out in that communication saying, hey, we've received the offer. There's some steps that we are considering or looking at, however you want to do it. But just to be aware that there's plenty of community input that if we choose to go forward or not, that there's, there's some, there's some public community input options. Because I think that's, I think that would help with some of the concerns is that there's, it's not just a nothing's done. There's like you're saying, there's some public hearing steps that need to go forward and their voices will be heard in a, in a good manner. If we, if things go forward.
Yeah, they need, they need some education too, like we all did as well. It's just they don't know what they're talking about and it's not their fault. So we did, as sooner or better, we can get ahead of it.
And this is a question, not a suggestion. But is it worthwhile to send those kind of bullet points and some of the background preemptively to the paper? Or is that just going to encourage them to perhaps write some stuff? Or, you know, keep this alive? I don't know. So that, it's just a question.
Definitely at some point I'd agree with you. I don't know if it's now or in a week or two weeks or, or post executive, like at some point, I think it'd be good to be proactive.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's better to be proactive because we always are. And again, but executive session stuff, you know, contract stuff, we do want to avoid any of that. And so I think the main thing I've heard is that's water rights. And I think that's the biggest concern. And that's probably on Ken's list that he's going to email over. So so everybody's good with getting a kind of a bullet point list. We're all in the same spot. Maybe updating that page on the website to make sure we've got kind of all these concerns covered. And then as, as we get stuff, and I agree with James, I think, yeah, a, a quick little sentence about, you know, and I'm, I'm happy to do that. I, I'm just not going to field repeated questions on Facebook, you know, it would be, yes, we've discussed it. And we, you know, all these concerns we're, we're addressing, you know, and please visit this page because I think it'll go down a rabbit hole if you start trying to address every single question individually. So all right, any other questions on this one? Otherwise, we'll move to Amy unless her question's related. What do you got?
It was one of my concerns. Well, and the other one isn't a concern. I attended the Housing Nonprofits Update breakfast at Western Colorado Community Foundation Center for Philanthropic Philanthropy. It was hosted by a brand company and it was really, really amazing. We heard from five different housing nonprofit resources in the valley. And I had absolutely no idea. I mean, I'm in this world every day and had no idea the scope of services that are available for some of our unhoused. And also those who are just kind of struggling to find properties. I would love to chat a little bit more in depth at like one of our workshops or something about some of these programs possibly presenting to us. I've brought up, you know, housing resources of Western Colorado, but there's a couple others that I think it might be worth us just kind of hearing from even just their quick little ten minute overview. I'd love for you guys to be aware of these, these resources kind of on a, a little bit deeper level. So, yeah. Yeah, super cool. They're going to be doing more of these. So I think you guys got the same invite I did. My schedule just happened to work out, but I would really encourage, you know, if you do get those invites, possibly try to make it because it was, it was great.
Amy, so on that, if you want, if you want to get those resources to Mike, we could look at what meetings we've got where we can invite him in to do a presentation. You know, with some of the other organizations in town, I think that would be maybe good to schedule the one or two at the same time. So we're
Yeah.
All about housing all at once. If everybody's good with that, I think it would help us with the housing, you know, commission. So, so send Mike over maybe their information and we can look at what our upcoming meetings look like and try and get them on one that maybe isn't so full.
Okay, cool. Thanks, guys.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Matthew, did you want to say anything about the Boy Scouts?
No, you led the meeting. We actually heard about the water rights issue at the end of that meeting. No, they asked some good questions. And it was greatly appreciated that Joel took the lead because he has more of that institutional historical knowledge. So the big mistake I had was I didn't bring a notepad so I could take notes about what he was saying. So all I'd say is well done, Joel.
All right. Well, yeah, so we did meet with the Boy Scout troop here. They are going to have, I think, a couple Eagle Scout projects coming up. And so we've had a few of those here in Fruita that some of us seen, I don't know if everybody knows, but the dinosaur on the dinosaur skeleton on a bike right in Civic Center is one of the Boy Scout projects. And I know they've approached us about painting the sidewall. One of them didn't finish that project. So if anybody has any ideas for, you know, those type of projects, we could always funnel those to their troop as well. So other than that, that is the only thing I remember that I wanted to report on. Aaron?
Oh, just two quick things. Park and Rec Advisory Board is looking forward for next week. They're wrapping up things, so they'll be well prepared. And then a few of us, I think Mike was one of them, just happened to be in the right place at the right time. We met, I believe it's the third great grandson of William Paper yesterday. He was super excited to come check out things. He's, he knows the William Paper family history from Florida. After he left Fruita, he went to Florida. So it was kind of fun just to be at the right time and right place to, to meet Les Paper. So he just decided to come up from, end up Texas to come check out with his family history. So he was able to meet with Yvonne and go check out the history, history room upstairs. So it was good meeting them.
All right, that's awesome. All right. Any other reports before we close the meeting? All right, hearing none. The time is now ten forty-five and we conclude our meeting. All right. Thanks, everyone for being here.